Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
Can you hear me?
It's a regular city council meeting to be held on Thursday, February the twentieth, twenty twenty five, seven P M at the Seymour City Hall, three oh one North Washington. Seymour, Texas, seven, six, three, eight, zero. All notices have been duly posted in accordance and conformance with the government code of the state of Texas, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, two, C. The city of Seymour attempts to make its meetings accessible to all its citizens. If you have need of auxiliary aids, please notify the city secretary at nine four zero eight, eight, nine, three, one, four, eight, at least forty eight hours in advance. The agenda is also posted on the city's website at cityofseamore.org with the following agenda to be considered. We have called to order. Let's do our roll call. Councilman Landwin.
Here.
Councilman Monty Glass.
Here.
Councilman Skylar Hendricks. Not here tonight. Council Lady Debbie Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Billy Hendricks.
Here.
Okay, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance and let's remain standing and I'll say the prayer after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Father, we just come here tonight with thankful and grateful hearts. We come knowing that you're you're here and that, Father, we pray for your guidance and wisdom and help us to understand and and be servants as you were a servant for the community and do what you want us to do and to do it in the right way. Father, forgive us where we fail you. Bless the city workers that that and all folks that work out in this weather. Father, it's it's hard and it's difficult and Father, thank you for the strength to do that. Father, forgive us where we fail you. It's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Okay. I don't have a lot to announce other than it's gonna be cold one more night, it looks like, and part of the next day and would advise people to drip your faucets, take precautions not to get in a plumbing situation. It's really difficult. I had a little bit of that myself yesterday, so know exactly how it is. You you hear this all the time, but it's it's still true. You know, if you've got pets and things like that, be be considerate of that. And that's really about all I've got now. What about Mayor Protem?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay, that that makes it. We can just go forward. We have the city administrator, Dr. Jeff Brazier, recognizing employees or citizens or departments of the month.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am just thrilled and excited about the progress we've made as a community on cleaning up some dilapidated properties and vacant lots in our community and and really just starts with the vision of our mayor. It's a priority for our mayor. And the 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 city of Seymour has responded very, very well. And we know that great success can never be achieved alone, but collectively as a community, and I see that you're we see the fruits of our labor as a community, the impact of of us coming together and working together to clean up some of these properties. And as a result, we've had some community members that have stepped up and they see the value and importance of cleaning up our community and have spent their their hard earned money to clean up some of these empty lots. Not all of them could be there, be here tonight. I know one's in the Bahamas and one worked late, could be here so that they had some reasons why they could be here, but they were very appreciative of us recognizing what they have done. But before I recognize the Albrettons, because they were able to be here, also want to just thank our our street department, specifically our supervisor, Mr. Kolicic. He is also committed about cleaning up our town and I mean, he goes above and beyond and jumps through a lot of hoops and and works hard and just does a just a fantastic job and gets his team behind him. And so he's another big reason why you've seen just over the last month. I guess about two empty lots. We've had another property that we'd cleaned up plus several dilapidated properties. Then we're working on another one. So collectively, as a community, I think there's like ten that's been done and there's like one or two that are still getting cleaned up. So if we can keep up this kind of pace, I really think it's going to transform the 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 looks of Seymour aesthetically and, you know, you know, people want to go to nice, clean communities, and I think people will see that, and I think that'll have a an impact on us as well economically. So but at this time, I do want to recognize and thank Tommy and Jeannie Albretton for being here. If y'all would please step forward, and we would like to present to y'all what we call the Community Hero Award. And this award honors those who have made a significant impact on the community through their dedication to property cleanup and improvement. And they actually, they cleaned up two different properties. If you go there, so we're I was just thinking about that one, but both those lots there across the street from Sonic is really transformed the look of that part of the community as people come to Seymour. And then, of course, Ronnie has cleaned up the properties just on the other side. And I know the buildings are getting closer to getting the old cafe cleaned up. And so it just keeps getting better and better every day, but we cannot do it without dedicated community members like y'all. So we just, on behalf of our mayor and our city council, we just like to take this time to recognize y'all. And to y'all, thank you very much for your for your hard work and your commitment. And also, yes, give him a hand. And a lot of times I've seen Albretton just out around the community just picking up trash and pulling weeds even around the police department. So they don't, you know, they don't care just about their their properties. They go above and beyond and and you will see again them doing way more than what they should. But but anyway, thank y'all again. And if you would, on behalf of the mayor and city council, accept this award. And we also tonight wanted to recognize Lloyd Studer and his family for cleaning up. He's cleaned up four properties within our community. Sam Boone was another one, and then Lance and Amy Burnett just recently knocked down a property right next to them that had been burned. So there'll be some others we might bring forward to the council in the near future as they get those properties cleaned up.
Thank you, Dr. Brazier. That's really important. And like I say, Ronnie has done so much, you know, just managing his resources and and getting it in there and I mean, really getting after it. We we probably don't say it enough, but we appreciate it. We really do. Let's see here. Citizen comments. Does anybody here like to? We have to keep it to an hour. We can't you can't go. Oh, I mean, three minutes. Excuse me, three minutes. Yeah. If not there, then we've got city administrator. Our presentations. Do we have a presentation?
A very brief one. Again, just to reiterate, your weekly beat and upcoming events are in your packet. We do want to again remind everyone that Saturday, February twenty second, from nine to ten thirty A M, we're gonna have a trout fishing tournament at Salt Fork Recreational Complex. So Mr. Weisner will be out there heading up that competition. And actually, today, the Texas Wildlife, they delivered a hundred and fifty trout to that bottom tank, that north tank, that small one. And so even if you can't make the fishing competition, we still have fishing available. So you can come up to City Hall for a ten dollar fee and you can out there and fish and catch all the trout you want as well. So it's a beautiful facility and we really want our community to come out and enjoy that. And then on March twentieth will be our next city council meeting right here at seven o'clock P M at City Hall. Also, you have your police department report. And again, it reflects the hard work and commitment of our Seymour Police Department and Chief Sawyer and his leadership. And also, we have a financial report, and so I've asked our financial director, thank you, to 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 be here and give y'all an update. And I just want to really brag on Miss Schumate. She has worked extremely hard. And she's worked side by side along T M L and various groups that have come in. And so we've actually, I don't want to steal over thunder, but anyway, she's just done a great job and I'm really excited about where we're at and where we're going. And the transparency, the financial updates we will give our council. It's going to be probably something that y'all have not seen in a long time, but it's going to be much, much improved. It's moving in a great direction. And again, that's due to Miss Schumate and her hard work. So Miss Schumate, you'll give a financial report.
Okay, and I don't want to take all of the credit because as he said, T M L has done an amazing job of getting our previous year audits cleaned up and reconciled. And and he kind of wanted me to give you a little breakdown of what work has been completed, what current we are currently working on and what we what it looks like in the future, what we're going to continue to be doing. As y'all, I think y'all met Mr. House, Gary House, last city council meeting with T M L. And he confirmed this week, he was here Monday, Tuesday, and half a day yesterday. And he has got the books reconciled up through non thirty twenty four. And so we can now proceed with providing Mr. Fleming, our auditor, with the necessary documentation that he needs to move forward with the twenty four audit. So we were real excited about that being completed. And also, while he was here, before he left, he was able to complete the installation of the pooled cash. It is all set up and running and all the software modules are now pointing towards the pooled cash, which means everything is just in one account. Everything is being directed to that one general operating account. And and now for as far as our current work, we've started the process of reconciling October twenty twenty four. We since pooled cash was not set up beginning October one, and we have had to go back and we are having to do a little manual entry with our checks so that they are all going to be directed towards the pooled cash because pooled cash was not set up October first. So we've had a little setback on that, but that's just minor. And those issues are going to arise. And as we clean those up, that's just going to make it and the reconciliations, you know, go that much smoother the process. We're also having some issues with our software company and the reporting issues. Some of our reports are outdated. We do have work orders in on that and they are working on that. So we're continuing to work with our software people to get those reports updated. They are also working on some new reports since we have not been pooled cash in the past. And we did not have pooled cash reports, so they are going to start providing us with pooled cash reports. So once we get this all set up and reconciled, your reports are probably going to look a little bit different, but from what I understand, they're going to be much easier to read and understand. So as far as our future work, we're going to continue working on the reconciliations until they are current. We're going to continue to work with Tyler Tech to get our reporting issues updated, if functional, functioning properly. And we're also going to be working on the reserve accounts so that as far as this pooled cash account, we're going to be able to see where our designated funds are separated from the pooled cash. So the funds that we have designated, that we are making transfers into those funds and reserving money for certain projects, we'll be able to see those accounts separated out from our pooled cash. So
Any questions specifically that y'all would like to ask Miss Schumate? One of the main things I got out of that is we're, as far as the reconcili bank reconciliations are concerned, we're in the current fiscal year now, right?
We are working on the current fiscal year.
Which is which is nice. To be in the current fiscal year, you know. So we've got a gentleman here, I think, from the auditor is.
Well, that's coming up on the action item.
Right.
But I do want to bring y'all's attention to, I put at y'all's table, financial report. And just to point out just a couple of things, again, we are probably expend overall for the year about twenty thousand more than we've generated in revenues, which again is typical at this time of year. Also, you'll see in some departments that we probably expended a little bit more than what we typically would due to the percentages based on what month we are during throughout the fiscal year. But that's for two reasons, you know. One is that we've got hit a lot with, we've had two audits done this year, which is about sixty thousand dollars, which were hit in this budget year. We've had a lot of support from T M L, which is hit in this time of year. And also Schneider Engineering has hit us with some bills as we continue to close out the whole issue with the transmission operator of issues. So we're getting hit with a lot of those type of fees. Cannot be helped. These are things that we have to get done. It's it's a top priority. But that's why you see some of those lines skewed is because of that, because those are equally distributed throughout the different departments. And so if a department has a smaller budget, they'd say the other departments is going to create a a greater skew than it would if that makes if that makes sense. So anyway, I just wanted y'all to point that out, but I think we'll make that up. And again, our supervisors do a great job. They're very frugal and they're very self conscious about their spending and when they spend. So anyway, I I think this is all work out in a very positive ways. It has over the last few years. And then I think Miss Bush is going to give us a little SWAC and C J D grant update.
So just prior to that, the dilapidated properties report you have in your packet, and it is color coordinated. All of those green properties that say that the public hearing has been set, I don't believe we're going to do all of those in March. That's quite a few public hearings. We're going to split that up. But we're looking to have nine or ten in March. We'll do nine or ten in April. As of today, three oh six North Foley is down as well. So the Hendersons worked on that this week, wasn't it on Tuesday, I think, that they tore it down? So I don't think it's completely cleared, but the house is down. The nine oh eight North Main is completed. That was done by the city. And, excuse me, I spoke with Ryan Dwyer. He is tearing down his properties this weekend. So those have been done. We've also completed two cleanups, one right next to the nine oh eight North Main and another on Tackett Street that had been the leftover remains of a trailer house and some other belongings. So that got cleaned up and those both of those two remediation projects were paid for or were agreed upon by the property owner to pay for those at a certain amount. So that's nice that we got those done. So just know that we won't do public hearings on all of those green properties next month. They will get broken up. On your SWAC grant, that's your solid waste grant that we typically get every year. We apply for every year. This year, we asked for them to fund the other sides of the fence, the transfer station. Today, the executive committee at Nortex approved this to go to T T C Q, and I suspect it will be approved at that level in a week or two. And that project is nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And then the C J D grants have been that we applied for January of last year have been funded and we have completed the body armor twenty twenty four grant. That was for seven thousand, sixty three dollars and eighty five cents. And we have gotten those plates in. All of that body armor has been received. So we are working to do our last report on that and close that one out. All of the equipment that was associated with the C J D grant for forty seven thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars has been purchased as well. We have not received all of that yet. That once we get all of that in, we'll close that out. And I asked today what our reimbursement turnaround time was, and they said it's very quick, like they are ready to give that money back out. So I don't suspect we'll have to wait very long to see the reimbursements on either one of those.
That concludes the city administrator report unless the council or mayor has any questions for us.
Okay. I know, just to go back to Suzanne for a minute, Miss Schumate, she's been working really hard and the fellow, the gentleman that have been working with her been highly complimentary of her and it just makes me feel good to hear that and to know that and appreciate your efforts because they were up here working Monday, which was a president's day. They were, everybody was ready to work, so they just stayed up here and worked. So appreciate that. Anybody got any questions, any other questions on that? If not, I guess we go to public hearings at this point. Going to have three, one A is in regards to a specific use permit zoning change of three twelve West Twelfth Street, also known as Lot Twenty Block Two subdivision. It's S and D. That's Settle Meyer Daisy Edition, I think is actually the name in Seymour, Texas. Specific use permit would allow for the use or placement of shipping containers for the purpose of renting out as storage units, twenty in total. So I think we've got some information in our packet, a drawing or a sketch or rendering or photograph, maybe.
So you should have, it's on what page, thirty five?
Thirty five.
I've gone past it, thirty six, thirty five. There we go. Oh, mine is different. Okay, you have the application from Mr. Holland for that. We did not have any responses back except I'm sorry, we had two responses back. Neither one of them identified themselves. It's kind of odd. And so we didn't have any negative response. You can see the list of people that we sent that out to. There weren't very, there's not very many property owners in that area. And so all of those people did receive a letter. They did not respond. Cody has done all of his paperwork correctly, has submitted everything. And he's here if you would like to speak with him.
Okay. I know Mr. Holland's here. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, or we'll just continue on. Does anybody have any questions? I drove by there today and everything looked neat and tidy and under fence. If I'm looking at the right property down there, black metal, right? So I just waiting for the for the go ahead, I guess, to begin on that.
I apologize. If you'll turn to page one thirty six in your packet, that has all of your packet information on it. And the page thirty five is just the public hearing information. So if you wanted to look at it right now, you could.
It'll be there on that corner of Foley and West Thirteenth, basically, in a kind of an L shape. Gotcha. All right, well, that's I kind of recall what it used to look like. I tried to get that out of my mind, but anyway, looks looks pretty good. Yeah, it does. All right, any any other questions? If not, let's let's go on to the public hearings number at one B. Second public hearing is in regards to allowing a game game rooms into the city limits and what local laws may govern them. And I know we have a gentleman here. We're going to, I think this is the second time we've discussed this. I know we've been looking at ordinances, sample ordinances from other area towns and that kind of thing. I think we're still correct me if I we're still in the process of researching that. I did make a call to was able to visit with the city manager in Haskell today, this afternoon, and he indicated he had no problems. He was aware of nothing that was causing any issues. And I think they have two there, you know, or one or two, two, I think he said. But so anyway, he was he 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 was very nice and very polite and just said that there were no issues as far as he was concerned. So just trying to get a little more information on that. So y'all have any questions or any comment or anybody out there? Chief Sawyer? You'll introduce yourself and speak directly into the microphone.
Hello, hello. I'm Bryce Sawyer, chief of police here. So I did talk to the officers up in Haskell and they had nothing but great things to say about them. So they had no issues with them or anything like that. My only concern is, and maybe I don't have all the information, so I can get with, is it McMillan, I believe? Mr. McMillan? So my my only concern is the legalities of the game room. I've done a lot of research on it and stuff. And I just cannot fathom a way that by state law, they are technically legal necessarily. I know that a lot of people refer to like a fuzzy animal exemption, which is like how your arcades and stuff function, but according to this state law, you can't accept anything larger than a five dollars. Like that's the most that can be paid out, period. I mean, or no more than ten times the amount of what it costs to play the game or five dollars, which everyone is less, actually. So that would be my only concern is I would just like to get with him and probably get some more information and see exactly how they function and everything, because I'll be the person I'm not necessarily all that familiar with, and this is new to me. So kind of a new thing in the state. So I've done a lot of research on it, and Attorney General's got some pretty strong opinions on it. So that's kind of my deal. And then I know a lot of the other ones is gift cards. They pay out in gift cards and stuff. Well, the Attorney General flat out ruled that even referred to gift cards as not being legal because they have a cash value. So that would be my only concern is is I would like, I don't know if we're voting on it today or not, but I'd like to just ask for at least some more time to you know, Mr. McMillan and stuff and see, especially if it's going to be inside the city limits, it's going to be my responsibility to check on it, you know, outside the city limits or whatever, not our issue.
Right.
But inside the city limits, I'd like to do some more checking before we just agree or either way, or just shoot them down. At least I'd like to hear the whole, exactly how they function, everything. So I know I'm making a hundred percent the right.
In fact, that's kind of what we're doing here. Like you say, you're you're bringing up some good points and I think. I think, like I say, we don't have, we've researched ordinances, but the legalities of it, anything you can provide like from the AG's office or anything like that.
I've got the whole document and everything.
Okay. Any other comments or? Yeah, Grant, you're, you're welcome to speak if you want to. If not, you're, just whatever you want to do.
We have the game, game, game room there in Haskell. We've been told by their sheriff that we are legal as long as we pay out in gift cards. But I know there's a big gray air, air, area there. There is a lot of towns that allow cash. We don't like cash. We try to support local grocery stores and tire shops and stuff like that. So a lot of that money goes right back into the but like Chris or like Chris and them say, gift cards are fine there. So I mean, that I would have to get with you and see. So.
That sounds good. We, we'll, like I say, we'll, we'll vote on this later tonight, right? Or to, or to do or not?
Just table that and.
Table it. That's what I was wanting to do. Yes. Because we don't have.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Grant. Okay, anybody else or we'll just move on? Unless anybody wants to make a comment. C, one C, third public hearing in regards to a straight rezone zoning change of seven oh one northeast, also known as lot twenty two block seven McLean subdivision Seymour, Texas for the purpose of a dog park.
This is in your packet under page one forty six through one fifty three. This is, y'all own this property and you're familiar with the youth leadership program wanting to put their dog park there, but we do go through the process of having it rezoned so that the property owners will know what's going on at that place. You did have two responses. One, one was from the school. Another was from the property owner directly across the street to the east. Both of them said yes. If you'll notice on page one fifty two, she did include some things that she would like to see included at that park as far as rules go. All of those rules are a part of that. That is not an issue about how that's done. So and Jeremiah Fobs from the youth leadership group is here and so is Joy Self. If y'all have any questions that you want to ask. There are two pages, one fifty and one fifty one shows you all the people that we sent letters to and there were quite a few and we only had two responses.
Okay, thank you. So no, no negative responses. As I understand, and Jeremiah, if you want to comment or, or whatever, you're you're raising money at this point. Is that, am I correct on that or waiting for us to act? Maybe. Yes, got you. You bet. Go right out there. Go ahead and see if, push the button up if it's not. Maybe on the back of it. There you go.
All right, we good? All right, I would just like to come here and thank you council for your support on through the whole process of the dog park, you know? It really means a lot that our city council is behind us on this and I would just like you to help us more further along the way, you know? You guys have been very generous allowing us to even start the park on the lot, you know? We, we already got our first donation to the park, you know? So it's, it's kind of moving fast. But that's all I want to say. Thank you guys for your time.
All right. Thank, thank you. Appreciate you coming up here. Thank you, Ms. Self for being here. Okay, any other comments from the public or up here? If not, we'll move right along. Consent agenda. Any questions on that from anybody? Pretty, looks like pretty standard stuff. We're, I might comment on one, we're doing a new or updating or approving an ordinance in this that will allow us to more how should I say this? Better handle junk vehicles. It, it spells out more clearly how we can handle, say somebody parked something in their yard and it's up on blocks and, you know, we, we get that over, all over town sometimes. So Dr. Brazier, did you have anything or that's, that's the way I read that.
Communicate that very clearly. It was just, just some confusion on one of our ordinances. And so we did reach out to our legal counsel to get some clarity on that one. So they would read correctly and we would ensure that we follow the council's ordinance as, as written.
Thank you for that. We're, like I say, I think we're kind of in cleanup mode right now as far as houses and there's enough of these vehicles around. It gives us a little extra way to move on these and, and do it more efficiently is the word I'm looking for. Other than that, I guess that would be it. I guess we can, unless there are comments from the, from the public or up here, we'll move to the action items.
Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the consent agenda.
Second. I always miss that, but thank you, Councilman Hendrix. Oh my gosh, what would I do? Councilman Glass. Okay, let's go to action items.
Make sure you vote for it.
Excuse me, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. It's one, two, four, four zero.
Now you can go to the next.
That one, I don't know why that one throws me. I just want to keep going every time. I'm a hundred percent. Did I? I may have messed up and got it once. Action items, number seven. Discuss, consider, take action concerning the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four City of Seymour audit.
Yes, and we have Mr. Paul Fleming, your CPA, and he is here to go over the report with you and hopefully at the end of this, y'all be willing to accept it and go over there.
What page is that, Lauren? I, I read it the other day. Sixty four. Okay, going the wrong way. Paul, how are you doing?
Good, how are y'all?
Good to see you again. It's, it's not cold in Wichita Falls, is it?
No. First of all, I'll just echo anything good that was said about Suzanne. The three audits that we've done, none of them would have gotten done without Suzanne. Anytime I ask for anything, she may be busy, but she tells me, give me a little bit and she gets it to me that same day almost every time. So I do want to brag on her. As far as the audit goes, of course, this was still eighteen months ago or however long ago. So there were still issues, but those things are getting cleaned up. Just like I said last time, our independent auditors report again is an unmodified opinion, meaning a clean opinion on the financial statements. They're presented in accordance with all the standards and our audit was performed in accordance with all the standards. As far as the financial results for twenty two, twenty three, I'm not sure what page it'll be on your electronic packet, but it's page fifteen of the, of our audit financial statements. It shows the general fund income statement for the year ended September thirty of twenty twenty three. And down at the bottom, it shows a little bit of a net profit that year of about fourteen thousand dollars to leave it with about four hundred and fifty thousand at the end of the year. As far as the other two funds, those are on page eighteen. Down near the bottom of those, you'll see both of those also had income for the year even after depreciation and transfers to the general fund, things like that. The fund balance in the water sewer and reverse osmosis plant fund increased close to six hundred thousand. And in the electric fund, it increased by about four hundred and sixty thousand. So of course, that fund had gotten pretty low back after the February freeze and all that. But two years later, this audit, it was in much better shape. So financially, everything went pretty well during this year. The one other thing I'll talk about, we're required to show the general fund budget compared to the actual results. And everything was really pretty close. The only thing that was different there was a an airport grant that was budgeted that didn't happen during that year. So it shows we have a million dollars less revenue than we planned on, but also about a million dollars less expenditure. So.
It was a wash.
It's washed. So the numbers look big, but it's all pretty close to where we thought it would be. Everything else in there is about like it has been in the past. We also have to do procedures on whether the city followed state laws, regulations like keeping the deposits secured, bidding, things like that. And we had no findings on those particular issues. There were still the issues with the bank recs being done late, but they were done. And really that's about it for that year. I'm excited to hear that we're getting caught up on twenty twenty four and.
That's, that's what's good to see is we're all of a sudden, we're into the current fiscal, fiscal year as far as what, what we're working on.
Yeah, and six months ago, you wouldn't have thought that.
No, no, it just, it's amazing what's done with man, our city management. Lauren, Dr. Brazier, Suzanne. Just Herculean task, honestly. But.
You can't overstate how.
No. It, it, a lot of work, but it'll be, we may have to have a little celebration if we can get to the get current. So anyway, we appreciate y'all staying with us and working with us on this and we're going to get current and we don't, we don't ever, we won't always be current. So all, all I got to say. Does anybody got any comments or something that? Anyway, well, we appreciate you coming and bringing this to us. Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Number where are we at? Number? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the audit for twenty two, two thousand twenty two and twenty three.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the same. There's none. Let's go to action item number eight. Discuss, consider, take action concerning a specific use permit zoning change of three twelve West twelfth Street, also known as lot twenty block two subdivision S and D in Seymour, Texas. Specific use permit would allow for the use of placement of shipping containers for the purpose for renting out as storage units, twenty in total. Any more discussion on this or a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this, that resolution or a specific use permit.
Yes, we have a motion to approve.
I second.
And we have a second. Is there, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. It's approved four zero. So I guess those units will be going in tomorrow. Well, maybe not tomorrow. Number nine. Discuss, consider, take action concerning a straight rezone zoning change of seven oh one northeast, also known as lot twenty two block seven McLean subdivision Seymour, Texas for the purpose of a dog park. Any more discussion on this? From the public? If not, would someone like to make a motion on that?
I make a motion. We approve the straight rezoning on the change on seven oh one east north.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Lauren? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Okay. We'll move to number ten. Discuss, consider, take action regarding skate park grant. Grant with the Pretty Foundation. I think Ms. Bush has some information on this.
And y'all have, I just got this today from the skate park company. So I put this on your desk. This is a rendering of what they've suggested and what we can, I believe we can afford. We can make changes to this as the quotes from the concrete come back. But let me preface this. The LOI, the letter of intent to apply with the Pretty Foundation was due the end of January, January twenty eighth or something. It was the Friday before the first of February. And we would have lost the opportunity to apply and Dr. Brazier and, and mayor allowed me to go ahead and submit an LOI to see if they would even possibly fund this. They came back and said, yes, we, we will allow for you to make full application. So what I'm coming to you today is to ask you if you will permit me to complete the application process. We're asking for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. There's no in kind or cash match from this city involved. The proposal is to put it in the bike park. I believe a lot of the reason why we were asked to go ahead and make application is because this was really a extension of the youth project that they did in twenty twenty four, and I think that speaks well for the application itself. The, I spoke with Monty today about giving me an idea of how to figure out our thought process on how much concrete would cost because we wanted, it's a big piece of concrete. So it's ninety by fifty with, at four inches thick. And I believe fully that we've asked for enough money to do the concrete and all in the park installation part. It would be a two vendor turnaround. The company is called American Ramp Company. They're out of Joplin, Missouri, but they have a distribution and employees in the metroplex area. The process of installation would be, we would go out for bid in April. We would, for the concrete, get us a, a concrete contractor done. And then we would order the materials from American Ramp Company. The concrete, I'm suggesting that it's poured in July and, and done by the fifteenth, July fifteenth, we can request funding from the Pretty Foundation so that we could pay that contractor. We would have to order the equipment from American Ramp Company no later than May. It's a three to four month turnaround to have those created and shipped to us. They would bring it down here. They build it, they install it and they leave. So there's no requirement from our departments or anybody to build anything or touch anything. Once it's down, it's down. The great thing about doing the American Ramp Company prefab option for a skate park is that in five to seven years, that's the longevity of the equipment that we would be installing. You could choose to replace the boards or whatever that need to be replaced and they can ship that to you. And they said it's not difficult installment. You just pull it out and put it in. Or if it has gone out of use and no one wants it anymore, you can just pull this out of the concrete. You can unscript from the concrete and go and you get to retain that ninety by fifty concrete pad. So you're not losing your total investment from the grant money if the skate park doesn't work out. You end up with a giant piece of concrete you can do all sorts of things with. So I li, I like this option. The grant is due the twenty eighth of February, which means I have eight days to finish writing it. And there's a lot more components, but I will get it, I, I will make it happen if you give me the opportunity to complete it and submit it.
All right, y'all get all that? Would anybody like to make a motion on that or is any discussion on it first? Anybody?
I make a motion.
So it's a hundred percent grant. We're not, City Seymour won't be out of dime. No match grant, no percent.
The only thing that I can see that we would be out of is we might want to install a gate that's right there by that skate park to enter the bike park for like foot traffic to get, but that would be the only thing that I can think of that we might, you know, be out of if we wanted to put a gate there. That's it. We already replaced the bleachers that are right there. So there's a sitting area. I was going to ask Atmos Gas to donate some trees so that we could start growing some shade over there. I don't think we'll have at this point, I do not think we'll have any in kind. And it should reduce the amount of maintenance we do there because at least you'll have a ninety by fifty piece of concrete. You don't have to mow.
But not to mislead the council, sometimes things do pop up that are totally and completely anticipated. So we may have to ask Ryan to come in and do something. So I just don't want y'all to think that we misled you on any way, but that's, that anticipated.
Oh, I heard it can be a little dirt work anyway to be done.
I, I don't think on our end, it's pretty flat over there. So we may have to remove a small pile of dirt that we put on the south end, but I mean, it's, it's small. So otherwise it's pretty flat.
But it doesn't matter if a concrete guy gives you a price on it. He, he does the dirt work anyway.
We're about on the bike park. Is this thing going to be?
So it'll go on the east, the southeast corner of it. So. So right there where those, where those bleachers are pretty much, there was a double gate on the south side um where they used to bring their vehicles in. So it'll be over there on that kind of corner of it. That way, the rest of the park isn't really affected. We'll have to, uh, part of the bicycle park comes back there and had done a figure eight. And what we would just try to do is maybe loop that and connect it back through. That way, the pop, the back park is still usable.
I make a motion uh to allow Lauren to um complete the grant to the Pretty Foundation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, no. It's passes four zero. Number eleven, discuss, consider and take action concerning gaming rooms inside the city limits. Are we, I, I assume we're still gathering information. We don't have to decide anything on this tonight.
Well, the council can, y'all can just say we are interested or you can tell us to continue, you know, focusing and, and getting more information. And if there are any information you want specifically, y'all, y'all tell us that, we'll make sure it happens. So we want to make sure that you have the information that you desire so that you can make a well-informed decision. So anything y'all do want, just let us know.
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest thing to me is the legality of it, you know? Make sure it's, we're on solid ground there and uh, you know, ten other towns can do it, but if it's not legal, technique, you know, nobody's just ever challenged it, you know, or something. But anyway, what's that? Yeah, they might, they sure might. But I would suggest just hanging on there, that Bryce continue to do his thing. We'll continue to look at an ordinance if, if that's what y'all want to do, if you want to uh just table it till next month.
So you have two options. You can do nothing and it dies for a lack of motion. Or you can table it for next month and that means it automatically has to go on next month's agenda. So whichever two options you want.
I make a motion, we table it till next month.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to table uh this item for next month. So it will be on next month's agenda. Hopefully have more information by then and uh.
Do y'all want to have another public hearing? You've had two public hearings on it. Do you just want to have it on the action items?
Well, if we can, I mean, you can have a public hearing and act on it, right?
So um, if we pass an ordinance because it's brand new and it probably will have something to do with permitting fees or et cetera, we'll probably have to have two public hearings on it and you don't have an ordinance crafted yet to do that. So I don't think that you would actually pass that next month. I think we would bring you an ordinance and you say, yes, this is good. Then we would start having our public hearings to pass that. So I don't think you.
So what are you suggesting for next month?
Unless you want the public's input on it next month, I would just put it as an action item.
So I guess though you brought up another question, do y'all want us to craft an ordinance for y'all to review? And at least consider and then y'all can then decide to move forward with that one or y'all can make adjustments to it or y'all just want to table it. So, I mean, he's already made a motion and a second, but you can make it a, make.
Subject to bringing back a, a draft of an ordinance for next month is what you're saying.
Yeah, we can do that if that's what y'all wanted.
Yeah. Y'all make that motion? All right.
Yeah, you can do that. I need to change mine. Yeah, so it don't matter what I say.
Yeah, we, we want to see an ordinance, I think is what.
That'd be the simplest one.
Okay. Okay. We need a second on that? Well, okay, all in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, no. Okay, number twelve. Um, discuss, consider and take action regarding ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five zero one Grant Works waterline project. Is that, should that be on there? I may, I may be looking at a mine's different, I think. Let's see.
Yeah, and I believe this has to do with the downtown revitalization grant that y'all had moved forward with last month. And uh, there's several civil rights policies that have to be approved to ensure fairness.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading off something else, I guess.
So, anyway, those three out there are just part of that downtown revitalization grant and these requirements that we have to get approved by the council so that I can move forward with the grant process.
Okay, uh, one sixty, oh, that's page one sixty. Discuss, consider and adopt a resolution fifteen eighty-two to designate authorized signatories for the twenty twenty-three Texas CDBG program grant agreement number CDB twenty-three dash zero one four one. Now, that's kind of that water project, the water line.
This has to do with downtown revitalization grant with the sidewalks and.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I got you. All right. I'm going to have to go back and look at my deal. Okay, uh, any discussion on this? Uh, the public up here? Several areas downtown that need some attention. Uh, if we can get the grant money to do it, then that's what we want to do. Are we doing this, you were doing this grant, is that right? Or Grant Works?
Well, the Grant Works is helping us, yes. So this is just another step we have to go through to, to get the grant, so.
It has to go through this process to.
Correct.
Got you. All right. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution fifteen eighty-two. We have a motion to adopt the fifteen eighty-two. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, no. This passes four zero. Discuss, number thirteen, discuss, consider and approve resolution fifteen, resolution fifteen eighty-three adopting required CDBG. Tell me again what that stands for? Thank you. Uh, civil rights policies. Now, we've got a lot of information in our packet about that and uh some of that through the police department and that kind of thing. So if y'all have read through that, it's Bryce, don't y'all do a report every year to show we're not racially profiling? And you keep statistical information on that and uh, no complaints as I read that report. So any discussion on that? If not, do we have a motion? There's no, no one in the audience that are in the, would like to discuss that uh to approve this? Fifteen, resolution fifteen eighty-three adopting the required CDBG civil rights policies.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve resolution fifteen eighty-three.
We have a motion, Councilman Glass, to approve this. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, no. It passes four to zero. I'll give this back to you. Uh, fourteen, proclaim April as fair housing month. Any discussion on that? Anybody against fair housing up here?
Sir, if you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation found on one, page one eighty.
Okay.
And then we will need a motion and a second to.
All right. I'm sure there's a faster way to get there, but. There we go. Ooh, nearly got me there. All right. Proclamation of April is fair housing month, whereas the Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight has amended as amended prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide without constitutional limits for how, fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only a national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the national fair housing law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Seymour, do proclaim April as fair housing month in the City of Seymour and do hereby urge all the citizens of this locally, of this lo, locality to become aware of and support the fair housing law passed and adopted by the City of Seymour, Baylor County, State of Texas on the twentieth day of February twenty twenty-five. Okay? Do we need a motion on that?
Mayor, I make a motion, we proclaim April as fair housing month.
Second.
We have an April and a second. Take your pick. Monty made the second. All in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, say no. Nobody is opposed to that, that's good. Uh, fifteen, the last action item, discuss and consider, take action and take action regard, regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three to cancel the May twenty twenty-five election due to unopposed mayoral candidate and vacant council places. Any discussion on that? I think that's a basic thing that is done.
This is the first day that we can cancel it now that we're out of the, the fourteenth was last day to file and the eighteenth was last day to do write-in. So this is just the next.
So it's just something we need to do not to, since there's not going to be an election.
It will not be a city mayor, May third election. There will be a school one. I haven't heard from the hospital yet.
So school, hospital, maybe, maybe. Okay, we don't care about that. We care about this. Any, any? I missed that. Uh, do we have anybody who want to discuss this or make a motion? To cancel the May twenty twenty-five election. It, it, it form of an ordinance, is that correct? To cancel it?
Mayor, I make a motion that we take action or, action ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three to cancel the May twenty uh twenty-five election due to unproposed mayoral candidate and vacant council places.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman, when do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, no. Okay. All right, executive session. We're going to have to go into executive session. I hate to ask people to leave, but if you'd like to hang around, you, you can go up where it's warm up in the upper gathering room up there, conference room.